Monday, November eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. I'd like to call the village for meeting the board. And we will begin with roll call. Trustee Booker?
Here.
Trustee Woods?
Here.
Trustee Owens?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
Trustee Greaves?
Here.
Trustee Johnson?
Here.
President Montgomery?
Here.
We'd like to invite the audience to join us for the quick statements.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have any person presenting to be heard?
There are none.
All right, thank you. We will follow our agenda as planned. And the next item is elected officials and staff reports, which are in the package. Any questions? I guess everyone's saying you smile.
I'm just happy to be here. Not in the rain.
Thought you had something you needed to say.
No, no.
If nothing, we will move on to the consent agenda. Now, consent agenda, we have consideration of amendments of November fourth. We have accepted twenty twenty-four quarter three financial report and consider the twenty twenty-five salary wage plan. Any questions on those items? If not?
I have a question on the twenty twenty-five salary wage plan. I know respect. Just had a question about. I didn't see like the tech groups mentioned out here. You know, are they? Where are they in this scope of things?
So they're in their union position. And this is only for nonrepresented positions. So their wages are all determined based on the union contract. Yep.
Any other questions? If not, can we entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved by Trustee Thompson and seconded by Trustee Booker to approve the consent agenda. Are all those in favor? Any opposed? I said motion carries. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is under new business, consider the twenty twenty-five employee handbook. And that is in our package with some highlights. And I think that went to the personnel committee before personnel and acting committee. So.
Sure. Probably one of the reasons why I'm so happy President Montgomery is in the audience. We have Chris Conley with us. Chris is our new HR manager who just started. It's been probably close to a month now, if I got that right, Chris. Chris has hit the ground running and has done an exceptional job. And Chris comes with a background of a little over twenty years of experience at the UW system as well as the DNR and benefits administration and has really good knowledge of ETF and the Wisconsin retirement system, has roots in Brown Deer, current Brown Deer resident. So we're really thankful to have Chris here. And Chris just wanted to be here to introduce herself. And also she helped with a lot of the language that's in front of you tonight. So really special to be able to have an employee within a month, you know, be able to help us with preparing this. Just because of the timeline, a lot of the changes that are proposed in front of you tonight was actually reviewed and also presented by our labor attorney. I think it's a good practice, once every about five years, to have your labor attorney review your employee handbook and provide some recommendations. And some things came from that. For example, on page twelve, we had no requirement for an employee to notify the village if they had an arrest indictment, conviction, or other criminal activities. So we added that. They also provided the recommendation for appendix B, which clarifies the harassment and discrimination in the workplace is really more specifically related to protective classes. They added a lot of language clarifying that. They also added some language on page twenty-nine that alluded to compensatory time for exempt employees. And that language was fine, except it needed to be changed to flex time because compensatory time a lot of times is attached to employees who are nonexempt. And so that just helps us avoid some future litigation concerns when it comes to a payout for an exempt employee. Otherwise, internally, we just made some other changes based on some feedback that we had received from staff. For example, on page fifteen, we talked about, you know, when an employee is hired, you know, what to do on their payout. Because now when an employee starts, we prorate their vacation. But long ago, when an employee started, they didn't receive any vacation until like after their first year. So we wanted to clarify that as far as how the payout would be done for that employee. And then the other thing that we did was we changed language we put in last year. We said if an employee left within twelve months, any vacation that they used, they would have to owe back. We thought that was maybe a little harsh. We also wanted to, we thought it'd be better line that up with the probationary period, which is six months. So we would propose to lower that, lower that to six months instead of twelve months. And then we previously had language where any employee during their first year could not carry over any vacation. We wanted to change that because there are circumstances where we felt like it would be appropriate for that. A perfect example is, you know, Danny was on maternity leave and our two other Parks and Rec staff did a tremendous job filling in during her absence. But because she was gone, they didn't really have the flexibility of having time off. So we don't want to penalize staff for really stepping up to the plate, especially during that first year. So if they want to carry over a vacation, we felt like they should. The other thing on page sixteen, there is some, or sorry, page twenty-six talked about some personal holidays as far as how that would be addressed on the backend. So we had some language that clarified when an employee starts their first year, how do we prorate the personal holidays? Because typically, your general employee will receive two personal holidays. But if they start halfway through the year, how many do they get? So we had some language that clarified that, but we had no language to clarify on the backend. In other words, if an employee decided to leave January fifteenth, are they eligible to use both of their personal holidays before they leave, even though they're working two weeks? So we basically matched what we would do on the frontend as far as determining if they had two, one, or zero on the backend as well. So if an employee in that scenario gave utilized two days, well, they technically hadn't met any of the increment days to earn the personal holiday. So they would owe that back in that example. Otherwise, we do some CDL testing. So we had some language referring to that. We have vision insurance, but it wasn't spelled out in the employee handbook. So we had some language summarizing our vision insurance. And as employees utilize more and more AI and artificial intelligence, especially when it comes to maybe starting a policy or a memorandum or something, we have an AI policy now. And I've been at a manager conference where they've provided some examples of some AI policies too, just starting to say, hey, this is a best practice at municipalities you should take a look at. And as President Montgomery stated, the Personnel and Finance Committee did review these changes and recommended for approval last week.
Trustee Owens, he's had a couple of questions. You mentioned Labor.
Yeah, so our labor attorney is through. Or no, Van Breeze, I'm sorry. So Kyle Gulya and Ryan Hayden are the two that we'll typically communicate with on that.
And I know it's like on page nine, they eliminated their affirmative action program since you didn't go to have one, but where does DDI come in? Because me, affirmative action, DDI is somewhat so.
Yeah, I would tell you, I mean, we want to look at having an affirmative action program. The only reason it was eliminated, as you mentioned, is because it's just, we have no program to begin with that's spelled out. So it doesn't make sense to refer to it in the employee handbook if you don't. But I think that's something that we could look at. You know, I think that's a potential thing for the Human Relations Committee too, to potentially look at and see if there's anything that they would recommend and how that would be spelled out. So I think for a future action item, that's definitely something that we want to do. But yeah, with no formal program on the books, we just don't want to allude to that in the employee handbook.
But we did adopt the diversity, equity, and inclusion policy a few years ago. As a, because that's how the Human Resources Committee kind of came about because of that.
Yeah, there was, there was a statement. We also follow like the EEOC has for any municipality or organization our size and that there's requirements that we have to follow there too. But yeah, there's that DI statement.
Do we have? And I know it was a separate policy in our, in here on social media. Employees, it's in here.
Yes.
Because I know we did a separate. And I think that was for.
Yes, and for employees, we not only had all employees sign off to that, but if any employee was a designated employee representing the village doing some social media policy, we had them meet with Kerry Hoy to do some additional training for that.
Trustee Woods?
I have a couple of nitpicky things.
Okay.
Page seventeen at the top, we're talking about Joe Smith and his vacation, but we've taken so many words out. It now reads, his vacation gets calculated as follows. Joe's vacation calculation at the time of separation, vacation earned. And there's no words in there. It's all down below that.
Trying to get to the spot, just give me a second. Chris, do you see that by chance?
I think that page sixteen, he's talking about.
Yeah, it starts on sixteen and goes on to seventeen. But seventeen is where it says how it's calculated. And everything got crossed out.
Page seventeen.
I think we just need to condense it so that all the extraneous words get taken out.
Okay, I see what you're referring to. Chris, do you have any thoughts about the, do you see what he's referring to?
Changed version, I just have the original one.
Okay.
I'll have to look at it.
So I think for the sake of the motion.
I think it just needs to have somebody go.
It does.
Some of the extra sentences. I mean, vacation earned, that says how it gets earned for that year, which is fine.
Yeah.
Well, we kind of eliminated all the words from the stuff above.
Yeah, no, that's a fair point. Yeah, Chris and I were going to have to talk because I don't, I would need to know what we're trying to get at for that computation. So what I would recommend for tonight, if you want to approve the handbook, feel free to approve the handbook with the notion of, say, like the approval of the handbook, pending staff's review of the language on page seventeen to reflect the accurate vacation computation, something like that. Yeah. Good catch. Okay, and then another one?
Yeah, the next one. It talked under new employees and vacation calculation. We give them their prorated vacation for the first year, they can use it. But if they don't last the six months, they owe it back, right?
Correct.
Okay. Because I was looking at, if somebody got hired, like I said here, April, and they'll get their vacation for six months, now they've got to hurry up and figure out how to use some of it so they don't lose any of it the first year. Because they can only carry over forty hours and they'd have a lot more.
Yeah.
But if they can use a little bit of it, that's fine.
Or like I kept using the example, imagine if an employee started, you know, sometime in early to mid-December. You know, we may not, you know, they would be able to, you know, have a very small proration day, but the likelihood of them using that are small to none. So that's another example of probably a situation where an employee would want to carry that over.
And then my next question is on jury duty. It's on page twenty-one. And this is more of a question because it says if they're on jury duty for up to a maximum ten workdays, what happens after ten workdays? I don't think all that many trials will be on that, but is that just on the employee at that point if they're out there for more than ten days?
Yeah, that would be circumstantial. So if, right, if we had an employee that was doing that, that's where we would have to work with them on some kind of schedule. Yeah, and I mean, we haven't had an employee come close to that. But it would all depend on the circumstance and, you know, usually if someone's serving, for my, this is just my perspective, an employee is doing a public service like that, like, I don't think we're going to penalize them. But we, I think we need to see like, okay, how many more days are we talking? And, you know, I think it's also important to know, like, if they're gone for more than two weeks, what, how was their task being picked up? Is this something where the employee would be willing to work with us to do some work virtually to help some of those tasks? Because once you're gone for more than two weeks, that's, that can create, you know, a hardship on the organization in a sense, so.
And I can kind of talk about this because I do a lot of trials. I've tried a lot of homicide cases, a lot of sexual assault cases. Even multi-count ones go about a week. So it's super rare that any would go over two weeks. So it could happen, but it's very, very, very rare.
I, you know, I figured the same thing. The chances of it being, but being that it's there, we know it's going to happen sometime. Okay. Next question. Page thirty-one. Non-exempt employees, we're going to put a line in that says sergeants in the police office shall be treated as non-exempt employees. We didn't spell sergeants right. You see your name's that names?
Yeah, we will make sure to make that correction in the final draft.
Okay.
And then I don't know if this shows up, but you know, like in our copy, it's looking at it. At the very end where it says personal, personnel manual receipt and acknowledgement. Is all that yet forced onto a single page?
Yes.
So that it can actually be turned in?
Yeah, the formatting might be off just because of the, the changes in that. But it is, it is all on one page.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep. Great catches. Thanks, Trustee Woods.
Anyone else?
I have to do this.
If there are no other questions, can we entertain a motion with the suggested recommendation?
That would just be with pending staff to put the new computation in on page seventeen for vacation.
I'll make the motion. I will when we accept the employee handbook pending staff. Page seventeen, vacation calculations and the additional, so run a spell check.
Is there a second?
Second.
Then moved by Trustee Thompson and seconded by Trustee Woods to approve the twenty twenty-five employee handbook with the review of page seventeen and spell check of the entire document. Are all those in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? I said that motion carries unanimously. The next item is to consider Brown Deer apparel with village's contribution. And I spoke with Tyler about this. He's been thinking about it, but many of us go to conferences where we're out and about. Most of you will wear your name tags. It would be nice to have something with village local. So I don't know what kind of information you have, but I think this is to really discuss if we want the village, what kinds of support we want from the village. Maybe to get one item and then if you want three, four, five, or fifty, college pay for the rest.
Yeah, so the plan Karen and Danny have been working on where we'll have a few options. And for the first week or first two weeks of December, we would reach out to officials and staff where you would be able to make a selection on apparel that you would like. And then I think it would take about three to four weeks in order to order and ship here. And we're having a really good year fiscally, where I feel like there will be some savings in the end where if we, village, we being the village, wanted to contribute to clothing and apparel, this would be a good year to do it. So there's several staff would have some interest to be able to have some Brown Deer clothing. And as President Montgomery mentioned, you know, I think there would be some interest potentially with officials too. And we would provide, you know, around five or so clothing options with a, you know, maybe like a quarter zip to a polo or a hoodie and maybe one or two other options like a T-shirt and that. So our thought would be have up to fifty dollars per employer official. And then anything above that, it would be on the official or staff's dime to pay for that. So with that approval, we'll get that lined up and the information sent to in about a week to start getting some orders in. And like I said, I would anticipate by January, we'll have that order ready to pass out.
Questions?
Do you have any idea how much this apparel will cost?
Yeah, I mean, a range on the item. I saw some of the cost for like, because I think the polos and the quarter zips I were interested in, and those were around thirty to forty dollars. So I think I picked fifty with the thought of that for sure covering one item. But you know, if you do the T-shirts, I bet you, you could probably get two T-shirts for the fifty dollars, which I think like our public works employees would have a greater interest in that. So that kind of gives you a range.
Trustee Johnson?
What is the budget you're looking at overall? How much of the setup?
Like a surplus, what are we looking for, a surplus? Or? Oh, I see what you're saying. So I don't know if, well, I wouldn't, I would be very shocked if all staff took advantage of it. I think a good amount will. But I was guessing close to eighty people. And then if you have up to fifty dollars, that'd be about a four thousand dollar financial impact.
Yeah, we just went through the same thing at work. What we did is kind of set up a store that people can go in and buy what's available and any difference they read.
Would these be, I know that we have Brown Deer logo, but can they be personalized with your name?
I don't think that would be an option that we would have.
That we want, but we can do it ourselves.
I think if, I think if you got the apparel and then had someone that would be able to do that, I don't see any issue with that. Yeah.
Other questions?
So you should have one, you can keep that universal color or?
I think for each option, we would have like two to four colors depending on the apparel. So there'd be, it's not like you would have twenty options to pick from, but there'd be a few options for you to pick from.
Other questions?
I'm just playing devil's advocate here for a second.
Yep, I love doing that too.
I mean, none of us are going to be on the board for that. Or none of us are going to be employees for Brown Deer for that. Would there be an issue, say, if somebody's wearing that T-shirt or whatever it is with Brown Deer logo and maybe, you know, commitment? The issue or whatever? You know, I mean, and I'll give you an example. Like when I worked for the county and I was responsible for getting rid of all the surplus. We had surplus buses, the transit bus. And at the beginning, they forgot to take off the transit signs or anything that was related to that. And so we had, you know, employees, we had the people who ride the buses. They were getting upset because that surplus transit buses were going past their stop and didn't stop to pick them up. The same thing, we had that with some of the police vehicles that we sold or the sheriff's vehicles. They didn't take the badge and stuff off of it. And so we had some people out there pretending that they were the sheriffs. They were pulling over people. Now, I know that's kind of extreme, but I'm just saying. I think they would do what they would go with that. Yeah, I know that, but what I'm saying is that when you put something off there like that, there's opportunity for things like that.
I, could it happen for sure? I would, I would, I think majority of municipalities or any organization still does it anyways. Just knowing that you have probably well over ninety-nine percent of employees who would wear that, that would, you know, represent still, you know, if they wore it beyond serving as an employer and official, that they would still wear it as a good representative. So that would just be something that you would have to weigh in your decision. I think it's a fair point and it could certainly happen. But that's where you would have to weigh, what are the odds of that happening?
And I think in terms of apparel, we all have, and I've served on boards, I've been with other organizations, and I've got all kinds of clothing items with their logos. I've owned the children for sixteen years. If I donate all of that stuff to the goodwill, anybody could be wearing. So it's some stuff you can't protect. Your heart.
That's different. I mean, I bought that stuff.
Right, but and some of the things we bought as, like if the bill supplies one item and say, I want three more, I'm going to pay. But some stuff you just, I mean, you can't.
I mean, they're not going to go after Harley because the person got hurt. And that's a little different than.
They're a boat against children because somebody got on a children, they hate them.
Anyway.
Any other?
I get the question?
Yeah, a question comment. I guess this is only for employees and trustee.
Correct.
T-shirts available for residents who want the Brown Deer.
There were not.
But we have had T-shirts available, people in the community.
Yeah, that's been a separate thing that we've done. But over the last, at least Nate can probably speak to this, five, at least five years, right? We haven't had, we haven't had any apparel available for any officials or employees if they're going to an event or a conference or something to show that they're representing the village.
So with that thought combined, there will only be a certain selection that we give. But in the future, if we want to do T-shirts, we could have T-shirts for sale for Brown Deer.
There's always the potential for that. Yep.
Yeah, you did.
Yeah, that was probably two years ago.
We committed the reason that it's a bit sale for the school.
Yeah.
Other questions? If not, can we entertain a motion?
I'll make motion. I look to approve up to fifty dollars per employee for Brown Deer apparel.
Long trustees.
Do you like it?
Yeah, I'm sure.
What?
You make the motion.
Just employees or employees?
He's, yeah, in the, I apologize, in the motion, I put employees, or should I say employees and officials? Yeah.
Okay, I remember. All right. Did you? It's a nice second.
No second.
All right, so then moved by Trustee Woods and seconded by Trustee Greaves to approve up to fifty dollars per employees and the national official. up to fifty dollars per employees and the local officials for round here here. Uh, all those in favor? Uh, any opposed? Uh, let the record show one motion here. Thank you. The next item is consider village manager evaluation form.
Uh, so this also went to Personnel and Finance Committee a few weeks ago. Trustee Johnson and Thompson and I met to go through this and they provided a number of recommended changes. So I don't know if either trustee Thompson or Johnson would like to speak to their changes. It was an overall effort based on feedback you provided during the last evaluation process that tried to um maybe get rid of some duplicative um responsibilities and try to just um shorten the form just a little bit to try to get to some of those main items. Um, so a lot of those changes reflect that. Um, and then uh I know trustee, the two trustees also mentioned making some just modifications to the form to make it a little bit more clear. Um, so you'll see the track changes and after the track changes is the new completed form, which shows a slightly different format.
I have a question. With, I s- I still saw a word smithing here, which is okay. How much was shortened from what was originally your beginning product after you made the revision? Was it shortened at all?
Um, the final page, I mean, the edits are included. Page two nineteen, so that's kind of the stairs there, shortened.
I may be able to answer that. Uh, trustee Booker, I would say for each like section, they were uh based on their recommendations, they were able to uh take one to two sections out. Some sections just, I think they found weren't as relevant anymore. And then some of them, they just felt like it could still be responded in a different responsibility uh that was in still in that section. So overall, the six, there was probably about ten that were taken out. No, ten, ten responsibilities.
That was all there to stop the nuts.
Correct. Like if I may just use as an example, uh, like for intergovernmental relations uh collaborates with the North Shore municipalities or was taken out. That's because in responsibility C acts as a liaison between other governmental jurisdictions. So that's where, you know, when I would give like a myself evaluation, I would talk about the North Shore community relationships and item C.
And do we have uh the timeline for us to once this is completed, the timeline for us to do this is gonna be to go do that?
No, we can go put it around, hoping tonight if this is approved, we'll turn around and still get it out this week.
Yeah, so we've always been doing it around my evaluate or my uh anniversary, which is February. So I think last year what was done is by like toward the end of January, I provided a self-evaluation. And then we, everyone's uh evaluation was due sometime in in mid February. And then we had a closed session.
I have a question in regards to like the fiscal, it doesn't stand. Where specifically item C, where is it, sure all financing is completed on time? Which includes yearly financial reports, thirty things after the month. And annual financial audit by September thirty. But then in another part of this, um, I think it was talking about twenty twenty four goals. And it had the audit being completed uh July thirty. I was just wondering what the difference is. That.
So that was a goal where we're just there was a, this is always a minimum goal of September thirtieth. And then I think you as a board had mentioned desire to try to still push to get the financials or the financial audit done sooner than the September thirtieth.
I I think we were at like, you know, end of July or something like that. And I was just wondering why this shifted from July to September.
Well, the language has always said September for this section. So if you want to amend it to July, now would be the time to do so.
But would we, is that pretty aggressive?
It it, in a, in a, in a normal year, July should be attainable. This year, it wasn't because we switched our auditor. But in a normal year, any organization should have a financial audit done by July. That should not be an issue.
So what's your, are you making a recommendation?
Yeah, I think you change to July thirty.
All that. Um, other questions? Let's go back to I need to make two moments. I mean, I um personnel that update, are we gonna try and prove it?
It's, it's, it's ready for approval after the board's ready. And we can make that July, uh, July thirty first, just to change that. That should not be an issue.
I have a comment. I, I mean, I, I've looked at this and it's a lot clearer than I think you did a great job. I'll show you now. It looks a lot clearer. Uh, everything on here, it come up with examples of. So, I think that's, I like it.
So if there are no other questions, we do need a motion with the recommendation from trustee Oates.
I make the motion. I move to approve the proposal revision to the village manager performance evaluation with the correction uh uh item C changing that date from September thirty to July.
Is there a second? Oh, sorry. It's been moved by trustee Thompson and second by trustee Woods to uh prove the revisions in village manager performance evaluation form with the uh big change from September thirty to July.
Yeah, yeah, I just want to make a friendly amendment. Since there's thirty-one days in July, are we okay with July thirty first? Just so we can say the end of the month of July. All right. Use that extra day.
All those in favor?
Thank you.
Uh, any opposed? I stand motion here unanimously. Thank you. The next item on our uh agenda is review and possible action revised. The development agreement with Atlas assisted living LLC for the assisted living facility at forty seven forty West Bradley Road. Um, I think Nate is gonna introduce this and can you also in that um you think you were tired uh if we're gonna need to go into closed session?
Sure, really, uh, that decision on the closed session is is up to the board. If you are comfortable after this presentation, we can move uh to taking action on this development agreement. We simply put it on the agenda for your benefit if you felt that there was further discussion that would be needed. So we'll, we'll leave that to you, but I'll introduce uh this topic. It did go to our plan commission last week where it did receive a unanimous recommendation for approval. What we have is a project that you probably recall uh that is stagnated a bit due to rising construction costs. Originally in twenty twenty-two, the village agreed to sell uh the former celebrations Johnny Supper Club at forty seven forty West Bradley Road to Atlas Assisted Living for a twenty-bed uh assisted living facility. And uh those plans were then subsequently uh designed and approved in twenty twenty-three through the plan commission and village board as well. But as I alluded to, construction costs started uh making the actual implementation of the project very difficult. And Emil will be uh, O V B A G A. Tricky one. Think I got it though and close. I'll try better. Alright, uh returned and asked staff uh to consider some potential for financial assistance. And as we were closing down tax incremental district number two, which uh it was located at this property previously, we identified that this property and others were still in need of further assistance. And so we created tax incremental district number six. And so what you have before you this evening is a development agreement that takes the operational details that remain unchanged, the site plan remains unchanged, the building design remains unchanged. And piggybacks into that a financial assistance package. The nuts and bolts of it really boil down to a pay-as-you-go uh assistance package wherein Emil and Atlas guarantee a value of two point five million dollars in exchange for a total incentive over the life of the TID to be six hundred and sixty-one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. And the way that that works in this pay-as-you-go model would be that every year, once the the increment is generated from the new guaranteed value, the village would return sixty percent of the incremental taxes to the developer and retain forty percent until that six hundred and sixty-one thousand dollar total is met. We think that this is uh reasonable. The questions at the plan commission centered on some of our TIF policy, whether or not this met the but four test. We have reviewed that with Baird. You see that Baird financial analysis in the packet as well. Uh, this project does uh recover its expenses by twenty forty and it does catch up positively throughout the life of the TID. We also felt that uh the cost constraints and challenges that Neil and his team are facing were realistic and that the demand as well as the guaranteed values for the property were also realistic. So with that, I know that John, uh Sean from uh Emil's team and I believe Samantha Baker also with Atlas Assisted Living is on the call along with Emil here to answer any questions that you might have.
So I, if I may, President Montgomery?
Yes.
So a little more detail on the closed session. The, the, there's, there's two reasons after the discussion, if you want to go into closed session. One, if you want to go in more detail on uh the incentives or the, 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 the but four, um, to try to close that, um, you know, we can do that. Um, and and it's itemized for negotiation. So if you feel like through the discussion, it's not warranted, or you want to have discussion on it, that's what the closed session is about. But after the discussion with Emil and his team, if you feel content with what is proposed, that's where it's not needed. So just know that's specifically with the closed session is if you want to go into greater detail um on those um financial assistance, that's where we would make that recommendation after all the questions are asked to Neil and his team.
Okay. And there are two uh trustees that are also on the uh plan commission along with staff trustee, uh Woods and trustee Grease. So I have no fair questions. But anyone else? Trustee Johnson.
Yeah, you mentioned at the pending commission, you said it was in the gallons. Was there only any vote at all or staying or?
No.
No, and as Nate said, it was only one person who asked about charity process, and that is um Commissioner Emmett. But he's coming from a Milwaukee perspective, which is a little different from ours. So, correct. Uh, trustee Grease. Trustee Thompson?
Nothing.
Trustee Booker? Trustee Woods?
No.
Trustee Owens. So if there are no questions and you're okay with the information that has been presented with this revised development agreement um without uh any further information, we do need a motion to approve?
I make the motion. I move to approve the proposed revisions to of starting. Uh, I move to approve the um amended development agreement. Um, Atlas. It's the assisted living.
Is there a second? Certainly. It's been moved by trustee Grease and seconded by trustee Woods to approve the revised development agreement with Atlas living, assisted living LLC for assisted living facility at forty seven forty West Bradley Road. All those in favor? Uh, any opposed? I stand motion here unanimously. So with that, do we need to do anything not to go in the closed session?
All nine, we're good.
So I move adjournment at six forty seven?
I'm just gonna ask a quick question. I know you're paying for, you had kind of like a somewhat of an opening date. Would this be in approved? When do you plan on, or what do you got to do?
Sure, um, right now the plan is to be in construction by by April of twenty twenty-five. Um, we anticipate probably a nine-month construction period. Uh, so we anticipate opening probably either in the first quarter um of twenty twenty-six, but probably at the, at the very least, the summer.
I appreciate the questions. We did adjourn.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, sorry. No, but I, I was asking, will we still recording?
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Yeah, so yeah, we are adjourned.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Emil.